Regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2019 to order. Could I start with the roll call, please, Tammy?
Maria Volkey.
Here.
Linda Yinlin.
Here.
Dr. Ashburn.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Eric Geis.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
Jonathan Smith.
Here.
Kevin Wick.
Here. Can we all stand and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Air Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. I did not see any forums turned in for public comment. If I suspect Tammy can... All right. Seeing that we have nobody slated for public comment at this time, let's move right into recognition. Right off the bat, we'd like to, the board would like to recognize the following students for helping to design and create a backdrop for our board meeting recognitions. Drake Cantrell, Ethan Shuru, David Davis, Jeffrey Dieter, Clayton Gritzmacher, Jacob Hamsing, Morgan Hendricks, Bryce Kuphal, Michelle Larr, Nathan Laskala, Brayden Rajek, Alexander Schmidt, Lauren Siemens, Matthew Strubig, and Ethan Wentz, as well as our FabLab director, Josh Zaluski. Thank you.
There are very few people that know the banner that was chosen. So how this worked is Dr. Sample approached us and we talked about having a banner for the backdrop for all the pictures. And we have 15 FabLab students, so each of the 15 FabLab students created their own design and we printed smaller ones that we had out at our parent teacher conferences. So staff was also able to vote on these. I brought them over, central office voted on these, and then the winning design we printed. So overall design, it's 54 inches tall and it's 10 feet wide, or 10 feet long. So our goal was, if you have sports teams, to be able to have the backdrop for the whole sporting team as well. So, I don't know, Oregon doesn't even know what the winning one was either. So if you want to take that end, we came in earlier and put some clips in.
Nice.
Nice.
Wow.
Have a few things to help up on that top clip.
Okay.
Please. If I can.
Yay!
That's amazing.
Awesome.
No.
You have to be the first. Where do you want to go?
Can you take a picture with the two of them in front also, please, Tammy?
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anita, Zach, great work. of the National Center for Women and Information Technology Awards for Aspirations in Computing. She was nominated for this award by her computer science teacher, Ms. Olivia Adaco. Skylar, a junior at Merrill High School, has been interested in computer science since using her very first computer at four years old. She is the chief communication officer for the Merrill High School Technology Club, maintaining the website to plan and communicate the CS activities such as drones, virtual and augmented reality, and the coding expo for elementary students. She will be taking AP Computer Science and other technology courses at MHS in the future. And she also aspires to further her programming knowledge and work at Church Mutual as a computer programmer, to help bring relief to people when natural disasters happen, or work with technology to prevent such disasters. Congratulations, Skylar, and thank you to Mrs. Adaco for providing these opportunities at Merrill High School. Our next recognition this evening is for Olivia Adaco, who has been selected as the 2019 Educator Award winner. Out of the 250 applicants, Olivia is being recognized by the National Center for Women and Information Technology for demonstrating her commitment to encouraging young women's aspirations in computing. Since joining the MAPS staff, Olivia has pioneered the first coding program in class to take place in the district. In addition, she leads the Technology Club at Merrill High, all while constantly looking for and implementing new and innovative opportunities for students. Thank you, Olivia, for your drive and passion for preparing students for the future.
Actually, really what I would like to thank is our administration, Mr. Murray and Kesha. If it wasn't for the support of our administration, we would not be able to do this, to support our district. So sometimes we're scared, you know, in the program, and it's in the classroom, and you're never going to sign up. It takes a lot of technologies to guide the technology, so it's asking a lot of questions. So really, we wanted to support this one happening. And Skylar, thanks to Skylar, you're trusted and you've taken the last. Or should we give you a hand in the other?
Thank you.
The next member of our district that we would like to recognize tonight is Michael Dickman for his help in potentially saving community members' life. Michael was on his way to school when he heard someone calling for help and found Lonnie Strauss had fallen in the deep snow and was unable to get up from behind a building. Michael tried getting others to help when he finally called 911 to get someone to Lonnie's assistance. Michael's quick actions were instrumental in helping Mr. Strauss, and we appreciate his efforts.
Can I help but smile now?
Very nice job. Way to lead by example. We're all very proud of you.
Yes.
I know that's a tough act to follow, but we'd like to recognize some other hardworking individuals. Darryl Frick, Jeff Zettler, Matt Olman, Steve Osnus, and the Director of Building and Grounds, Dale Bergman, for their extra hard work with snow removal. They've been giving up time with their families on evenings, weekends, and the wee hours of the morning to get the snow cleared so students and staff can arrive safely. Their hard work and diligence is appreciated by all. Darryl?
Yeah.
Yes, it was. That may have been intentional. Certainly, thank you for all you guys do, and I share that with Matt, Jeff, and Steve. And we know that this year, certainly as we can see by all the calendars and adjustments, we've made it most hard on you and your staff. And really appreciate all the adjustments you've made to make it safe for everybody. Thank you, guys. After wrapping up our recognition portion, I'll turn it over to our Student Board of Education Representatives, Abe Akey and Bella Troyer.
Okay, so basketball season has come to an end. The girls ended their season with a record of nine and 12, and the boys' basketball team made Merrill High School history. They went undefeated at home, won a conference championship, and made exceptional finals. They ended their season with a record of 22 and 5, and they had four players that got all-conference titles. Quinn Stackbauer won Player of the Year, and Coach Shallow won Coach of the Year. Spring sports are starting. Track practice started last Monday, and they have been selling cookie dough to fundraise for their team. And Blitz Night is tomorrow, so they go around town and they go door-to-door asking people for, to buy more cookie dough. And softball practice started on Monday, and the banquet and raffle is on Friday at the Town Hall at Sticks. And baseball and soccer start on Monday, the 18th. Hopefully, the snow will melt fast, so our athletes will be able to get outside. And spring break is next week, so our students will get a chance to recharge their brains, but with all the snow, it feels like we have.
All right, I'm sure in the future, the April 4th to the 7th is the Merrill High School Musical Momia. The performances will be seven o'clock Thursday to Saturday and 1:00 on that Sunday. I've been putting in a lot of hard work. It's going to be crunch time, so it's a little a bit misty. It might be the slowest technical weather. And then junior prom will be on April 13th, a Saturday. It's a big event. We're already starting to ask people if they can be in.
All right, thank you, Abe and Bella. Anyone have any questions for either upcoming events or things they touched on besides their grievance with Mother Nature? On behalf of all our spring sport athletes and coaches, go ahead, Maria.
I went to the last couple of basketball games, and I really have to commend the students, actually, because some of our opponents didn't have the sportsmanship that our kids did, and our kids were respectful and fantastic and were able to prom. So good job.
Anything else from any other board members? Thank you, Maria. To note by many in the community, and well worth mentioning. All right, thanks, Abe and Bella. This time in the agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample to go through and review our administrative reports.
The spotlight on education this month focuses on the mid-year MAP data and RTI. I know there's a lot of information there. Do you have any questions at all from any of the buildings regarding this data? Jill Siemens' report from Pine River School for Young Learners is also there. That's her monthly data report. Any questions on that? See, the Director of Special Ed report. This one is on Project Search, and we have our first future graduate, so we have potentially some board recognition in our future, I think, with our student. Any questions on Project Search? Cindy's report, Director of Human Services, Human Resources, that report is attached regarding Culture Committee, Recruitment Insurance Tracker, and Health Insurance Renewal. Any questions for Cindy? Yes, well?
Is this normal? I have 17 vacancies, please.
Can you come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Cindy, could you turn the mic on just a double click right here?
Yeah, they're tricky sometimes. I think it's best of all of us.
Is it on now? Okay. Seventeen vacancies at this time of year is probably a little high right now, but we do have six of those vacancies are from the positions that we are pulling out of the Northern Achievement Center. So those are positions that are not going to be contracted through CISA anymore, and those are for next school year, so that adds to the total. And we do have, I think, seven or eight retirements and a couple of resignations that are effective right at this point in time right now.
Did you see one of them?
Well, all of the retirements have to be in by March 1st, so that chunk of people. So last year, at this time, we did have 13 teachers that retired, so we would have had at least 13 vacancies at this time last year.
Brett, go ahead.
I might be missing it, but I can't find it. When do you see, or if it's there for me to see or run live on here, your exit interviews and everything that you do, there's a big spreadsheet that had all the information on that. Is that available 24/7?
No. I did that at the end of summer last year, because it usually, we do have people that will resign throughout the course of the summer yet, so I wait until they're all done, you know, sometime in August. I think I brought it to the board last year in September.
Just to add on that, Dr. Sample, we had talked about also trending, and that'll be looked at in the early summer as well. So just to add on to Brett's question and clarify that those were two separate things, but we're working on trending there also.
Location, content area, grade level, those types of things.
Right. Any other questions for Cindy in the Human Resources report? Go ahead, Dr. Sample. Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy. Brian Dasher's monthly budget update is linked. Any questions for Brian Dasher on this month's monthly budget? You'll also see that Kesha has provided her report with a variety of different topics. Any questions for Kesha on this month's technology report? And then finally, we've got my superintendent report. I highlighted a couple of events that I went to with the annual Boards of Education Legislative Meeting, which was over in Medford. It was very enlightening. I was pleasantly surprised, especially considering this winter, that the school start date is still a point of contention with us and with boards. And legislative reaction was certainly mixed, if not one-sided, towards Department of Tourism, but we're keeping it in front of them, just for some local control and let the Dalles and Monaco do what they wish to do with tourism at other places. In fact, we had a letter supporting this school district to have local control from our very own Chamber of Commerce. And so certain areas in the state are affected greatly by tourism and some are not. The other thing that we did, now we have all administrators, at least one building secretary, and our very own board president, who have all been exposed to Tim Kite. He's with Focus 3. He talks about culture and climate. And so the rest of us were able to attend the Tim Kite presentation at Camp Forest Springs. We are working on embedding that as part of our culture and climate and potentially next year for the beginning of the year MSI Day, to expose all of our staff to Focus 3 and Kite. He already dominates a corner of our weekly bulletin each and every week, and so we're hoping to bring him or one of his leaders into this district and possibly partner with Church Mutual and Tomahawk to help offset the cost, because there's interest there. And then finally, you'll see the topics of the cabinet meetings between the last board meeting and tonight. Any questions for me with this report? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda, we'll go through the committee reports. The first one is the Finance HR Committee. The minutes were attached for the board members from the February 6th, 2019 Committee Meeting. John Smith, the chairperson, and other members of the committee are available for questions. Anyone have any questions for the Finance HR Committee? Maria?
Just a quick one. That's actually the March 6th as opposed to February 6th. Yes or no? Okay. And the only reason I ask that is because when we had talked last month about what you just mentioned, Kevin, with regard to the trending data as to attrition in the district, was that discussed at Finance HR?
Yep.
Okay.
We discussed it. I mean, it's going to be something that gets developed over the summer by the new director of Human Resources, using the data that we have. So that's kind of on their target for when we meet our new director. That'll be part of their initial projects to get set for most likely the beginning of the school year is kind of the target time.
Thank you.
Can I just call? I just wanted to showcase to anyone who hasn't, even the administrators in the audience, the budget carryover policy, which is quite a new concept that was forwarded, where there will actually be a portion of the annual budget that will be allowed to be pushed to the next fiscal year, so they no longer have to race to the finish line to spend their budgets rapidly, and they also have the opportunity to accumulate money if there are certain things that they want to kind of save up for, rather than buying, you know, a truckload of Taekwondo rokas at the last minute. They can save the thousand bucks for something else. So take a peek at it. It's moving to Policy Committee next.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other questions for the Finance HR Committee? All right, let's move on to the Facilities Committee. We had the minutes attached from the March 6th, 2019 Committee Meeting. Myself as chair and other members of the committee are available if you have any questions. Any questions for the Facilities Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to our next topic, just to review the unfinished business that's on the agenda. As a reminder, the ALIS training for students, we've reviewed that a number of different meetings, most recently at the March 4th Safety Subcommittee and the March 6th 2019 Facilities Committee. There was a topic summary sheet there from Dale Bergman, and it's going to be reviewed by the Director of Curriculum. Anything you would like to add on that, Dr. Sample?
No. And our interim curriculum director is going to be Merrillizing these things, working with teams to Merrillize them. You can see in the rationale that we've got a number of lessons assigned per grade level, and so that will be ready to roll out for the 1919, 19, and '20 school year.
Any questions from board members on that topic? We've motioned that, and we have some direction as to completion and things on that, so thank you, Dr. Sample, and staff for working on that and keeping us informed. Next item on the agenda, we'll be moving into the Board of Education business, and we'll start with the 2019 Summer School Academy Program Course Description Book. There was a link attached, so everyone could see that, and there's a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening?
Recommend a motion to approve the schedule's course offerings and registration materials for MAPS Summer School enrichment training.
Your motion by Jeremy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Do we have any questions or discussions on the topic? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the fleet leasing for district vehicles. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the five-year lease, I'm sorry, fleet lease agreement. It's quoted by Ewald Solutions.
Motion by John Smith. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Nubs.
Nubs, too.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the CISA 9 2019-2020 Shared Services Contract with the attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Motion to approve. Paul, with the motion to approve the CISA 9 2019-2020 Contracted Services Agreement as presented with the projected cost of $135,448, do we have a second to Paul's motion?
Second.
By Maria. Do we have questions or discussion on the motion on that topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next agenda item is the revision for Bylaw 0155 on committees. The revision was attached.
Would you like me to review it?
Would you please?
Okay. All the edits are obviously in red. The first one is the superintendent shall appoint members of the cabinet as they relate to the committee's subject matter, and the cabinet members shall also serve as ex officio members of each committee. Meaning behind this, we do this already, but we're going to put it into a formalized bit of bylaw that actually gives the superintendent the authority to do it. And these ex officio members will then become voting members of the committee. So instead of having two or three board members vote, because it's a non-binding vote that has to go to the full regular board for approval anyways, you can get a more healthy six or seven or eight in the room. This appointment of the various committee memberships will be approved by us, so who's ever on each one of the committees, from the administrative level to the board level, will annually make a motion to adopt these nominations and approve them, so that we're aware on an annual basis. Each committee will formally put in place, we do this already, but it wasn't listed anywhere, that the first meeting following the president's annual appointments, is still designate by a majority vote of board person, chairperson. Again, we do it, but not in writing. Here's where it gets for a little more convenient for quorum, in the absence of a designated board chairperson, any other regular committee board member or the president may serve as an interim chairperson. Basically, if you show up, chairman's person's not there, gives us the authority to still have the meeting. We can all read from an agenda, right? The, "All committee members, board appointees, and ex officio members shall be considered part of the quorum calculation, are allowed to vote to advance agenda items to the regular board for consideration." So basically, the approved population that we did annually, that's making up the quorum number, not the one or two board members. In the event of a planned absence, so say, for example, I'm not able to attend the facilities meeting, but I know Nubs has an interest, I can ask Nubs to come in my place and sit on my behalf. If we get into a meeting and the chairperson notices that I'm missing and sees Nubs sitting in the audience, the chairperson, at their discretion, has the opportunity to ask board members to step in that place and say, "I want to have full board participation." And then any substitutions made will be announced during the roll call, so that the board members can... In the event of a planned absence, so say, for example, I'm not able to attend the facilities meeting, but I know Nubs has an interest, I can ask Nubs to come in my place and sit on my behalf. If we get into a meeting and the chairperson notices that I'm missing and sees Nubs sitting in the audience, the chairperson at their discretion has the opportunity to ask board members to step in that place and say, "I want to have full board participation." And then, any substitutions made will be announced during the roll call, so that the minute taker can record that Nubs in that circumstance, I'll keep picking on you, is serving as a member of the committee this evening, or if there's a change in chairperson that Nubs is serving as the chairperson for the evening. And then, these proxy members should also be considered part of the quorum calculation, so that we can just move forward with regular voting, we don't have to hash out whether Nubs has voting rights or not. As soon as he occupies a regular seat of a board member, his vote is equal to mine for that evening. If we all show up, as long as there's one regular board member from the committee present, the meeting can continue. And then, any non-appointed board member may not serve as interim chairperson, nor fulfill the one board member requirement. I'll throw that one out there. Basically, we want to have at least one regular person being the chairperson, and we don't want, we don't want someone from the audience being now the new one-member board requirement, so you have to have regular attendance to actually slip into a seat. I did add the language after ad hoc committees may be created and discontinued by the majority approval of the board, basically allowing us, because it is a bylaw, if we get together and we say we want to create an ad hoc committee, to understand that the board has also the right to suspend an ad hoc committee. We don't have to wait for someone to say, "We're done," we could actually say they're finished if we no longer find it to be a worthwhile endeavor. Scratching out the concept of any change at any time by a majority of the members present at any meeting, that didn't make any sense to me, because that would mean that the meeting itself could suspend itself, which I still think the board should have to make that decision. And then, a member may request to refuse an appointment to the committee. I put the word "board member" because I highly doubt that administrative member can refuse if the superintendent asks, right? Might just be bad form if they did, I don't know. And then, some editing down there in the Citizen Advisory Committee, some word crafting down there where I added the, got rid of the word "school" as with all of our policies, rather than "shall," I put "may." And then, by majority of approval, enlist an advisory citizen group. Basically, whenever we put advisory citizen groups together, it should be voted upon that we all agree to its necessity, and it should come up at a regular board meeting, and then just outline that anything that they brought forth should be submitted only as advisory to the board. Obviously, I'm just reading what I wrote with a little minor explanation here or there. Are there any questions specifically? Paul?
Open meeting laws, we published, who's going to be at the meeting? Can we change that without notice? So in other words, you can make it, I show up, you put me in place, just on the books in place. Can that be done without posting 40 hours in advance, or 20 hours in advance for the organization?
All open meetings laws, they cover, they require that designated-
Staff be there, that's who's expected to be there. Substitutions can take place, nothing to do with whether or not it's violated open records laws or not.
But that's staff, not a board member. A board member, staff is not listed.
I mean, that's what I mean. Because board members are expected to be there, just if they're not there, if they're absent, you know, that's not a violation nor if somebody substitutes in their place, as long as there's a policy to back it up.
I don't know the answer to your question. I guess one of the things, my thoughts would be is that as long as our bylaw of the organization dictates what may happen ahead of time, that that would, if it, right now, if we did it, we have no-
I guess I would suggest that we review that one, and err on the side of caution, because bylaw doesn't mean squatting comes to state statutes. And I wouldn't want to create a bylaw, and then we do it, and people down the road say, "Wait a minute, there they are," they're saying, "Who's going to be here?" Then he doesn't show up, and somebody else is there.
We don't want to have a whole squat section either, right? Can we do that?
It's just a thought, I mean, it's not, I don't think it's critical, but it just should get an answer.
Okay. Is everybody kind of in a consensus agreement that they want the-
Winner's got a legal opinion, I don't just feel the same.
All right, would we like that tabled for the next meeting, or were you-
Yeah.
-into motion and-
I think I'll, I'll motion to table the bylaw approval to the April meeting pending the review of open records requirements.
Table, do we have a second on that? Second, all those in favor of tabling that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we'll table that to the April meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll review that and get the necessary legal opinions on that and bring that forward. Next item on the agenda is a revised 2018-2019 calendar, snow day makeup proposal for February 25th, 2019 canceled school day with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Jeremy?
Recommend a motion to approve the June 12th, 2018 makeup day, the proposed revised 2018-19 school calendar, to be with partners established-
I was against in DPI, and to also allow administration to add on days to the calendar if needed for possible future canceled school days.
Motion by Jeremy, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Brett, go ahead.
So, wrapping the head of day, was the discussion, have any minutes, or conversation gathered?
Sure, when I looked at the minutes, we're so far into the calendar right now that the minutes are going to be somewhat of a barrier for transportation at this point, as well as if spring sports ever do get to participate, and so that was that recommendation, and winter's not over yet. Doesn't mean that I mean not bring it back later, but the later we go into the school year, the more the minutes are starting to add up. The one thing I neglected, too, which is highlighted on the board report, is moving the, I added that, I proposed adding the day to the board, but I forgot to move the end of third quarter from Friday, April 5th to Monday, April 8th, and so we're just going to slide down one day, too. And then, what is being motioned is, is to grant me the authority to add an additional day, should we need one. Up until the sun coming up this morning, we had one early release or one late start banked, that's gone now, so we're completely even. So anything else is going to have to be made up.
So the minutes were just too much, we're in like the 10 to 15 minute ballpark?
We're looking at 2021, 22, getting in there, not far apart, and whether we take it earlier in the morning or closer under the average school.
Are all of our, I mean, the middle school, we added minutes to catch up. The high school and elementary schools, are they on the same page?
Everybody's on the same page as far as the school that they've missed.
Okay. So we don't have, like, elementary schools aren't ahead or one another, okay.
We've all, we've all missed an equal number of days now at this point in the year. One thing I would like to do, too, is perhaps early in the summer, midsummer, is if the board's interested to bring the board approved calendar for the 1919, 1920, 1919, the 2019, 2020 calendar, to look at potentially extending days. I spoke with three of our four elementary principals, they are in favor of that because of the ELA, the math that they're doing, they could certainly use more instructional time. It could help with a problem here with instructional minutes, and even potentially build in another day or two, just so we don't end up in this. I don't expect, I never expect this winter to happen, but it certainly happened this year.
My only concern was, you add a day on June 12th, it's not, there's nothing gained from that, you know, we passed our MAPS testing, we passed our standardized testing, so the time that the staff needs to actually educate the students is now, rather than on June 12th, when every student's checked out on June 7th already, so.
Any other questions or discussions on the motion or the topic? Mr. Smith?
Do we still start the day after Labor Day?
We're required by state law not to start prior to September 1st.
Got you, that's still in place. Was there talk of one time of getting rid of that?
Yeah, in fact, that was just recently brought up at the legislative meeting in Medford, that all superintendents and boards are asking for local control over that. It just doesn't make sense, depending on how the calendar falls, that we have one school day, and then, hey, three-day weekend, now we're back again, because nobody wants to start after that three-day weekend, depending on where it lands, and so we take advantage of starting on September 1st if that's possible. If, you know, we've already got three weeks of fall football, everything else is going, and so it's a heated debate. Department of Tourism has more money than public schools, and they-
They're winning.
Yeah, and before it started off as, "We need, we need our high schoolers and sometimes our middle schoolers to be able to work in the tourism industry," and then it was, "We want families to vacation." Well, there's a large percentage of our families are already tied to any type of activity, activities, clubs, sports, and so we're going to continue to, in fact, maybe next year, they'll start soliciting boards around the state to write a letter of support for local control. Be nice to have that flexibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Brett?
Just for my clarification, not that it matters this year because we're too far gone, we run into transportation issues when we extend the day. I mean, aren't they, they plus our students, so they should be subject to when our students are leaving or coming.
Correct.
Is that not the right thinking with that?
They're contracted services. My worry about transportation in the morning adding minutes is this morning. This morning was a little later than what I'd liked to call school, it was kind of unpredictable, and everybody needs to be contacted, because we've got some kids that are walking out to their driveway by 6:00 a.m. Now, if we start adding on to the beginning, we're really pushing some of these kids that are on buses for an hour and 10 minutes. So it's not so much the contractors are saying, "Nope, we're not going to do that," as much as, "Can we add on in the, in the start of the day?" And if we add it all on to the end of the day, how much are we going to be interfering with some of those activities and all those things?
Sure.
People could just adjust it back, but no, I don't anticipate a problem with our two pissing contractors at all.
Obviously, adjusting five, 10 minutes is one thing, adjusting 25 to 20, 25, 30 is different, so, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion or this topic?
I just, can we add that to the summer calendar that we have a discussion with this? Again, like you were speaking about, about making some changes?
Sure, if the board would like to look at possible revisions to the board approved calendar for the 1920 school year.
I was just, I was going to wait until the end of the whole thing, but it suited to ask about it now.
Sure.
Because it probably wouldn't hurt, because who knows what we're going to be looking at.
It'll be nice and warm this summer when we talk about it.
Fair enough. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Otherwise, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next topic on the agenda is potential administrative compensation plan. There was a recommendation from the March 6th, 2019 Finance HR Committee with the attached topic summary sheet from Cindy Hines and Brian Dasher. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I'll move to approve the director portion of the administrative compensation plan.
We have a motion by John Smith, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Maria, do we have any questions or discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Aqua J's donation. There's an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion. Do we have that motion this evening? Maria?
Recommend to approve the $6,500 donation from the Aqua J's to help offset the cost of starting blocks at the PRMS pool.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Brett. Any questions or discussion on the topic or the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the community conversation outcome. If I could ask Dr. Sample just to highlight any progress.
We addressed five priorities this month, featuring the students of Washington Elementary School, their third and fifth grade students made over 200 Valentine's Day frames for residents of Pine Crest, kindergarten students were making dog treats for the Humane Society, and our second grade students at Washington donated toys to Hainan. So I know Tricia's very proud of all of her students' efforts with the community civic responsibility and citizenship. Also, Jefferson's very own, Mrs. Van Alstine, her class worked hard to clear snow from fire hydrants. I know that that's been in the paper here lately. The students volunteered their time in response to Merrill Fire Department's asking the community for help, so we appreciate the Jaguars for all they did. On another note, once we finish strategic planning, I'll be looking to the board also for a, any ideas for revising this potentially. Community conversation will never go away, but the community conversation, a strategic plan could kind of slide in and take its place. I see our priorities as possibly changing. While Fab Lab, the Fab Lab has been established, we're never going to continue, we're never going to stop doing good things in the Fab Lab, but that may come down on the priority list. And so, we'll look at probably melding what we get out of strategic planning with what we have on community conversation, and we'll continue to work hard towards meeting those
Any questions for Dr. Sample on the update on the community conversation outcomes? All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample, for the update. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Before asking for the motion, would anyone like anything pulled tonight from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion. Maria?
To approve consent agenda items 8 through P, which includes the approval of second fees and policies, 6320, purchasing and policy monies in school buildings, and that's at the February 20th, 28th, and February 25th, 28th, 20th, 20th, 28th, 20th, and the seats total of $3,174,828 and $30,000. Personal report and donations total of $162,000.
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jeremy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay from February 25th.
All right, thank you, Maria.
February 25th.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll stay in from the February 25th also.
Thank you, Linda. Motion carries, with the noted abstentions.
Should be noted that I'm thinking of October 25th.
Yeah, me too.
It was much nicer.
I second that.
We may oppose where you were at, because we weren't there, it is noted, thank you. So let's review items for future meetings. We did mention a couple, including the 19, 20, 20 school year calendar that we'll bring up in the summer. Do we have others to bring up? Jeremy?
Yeah, I was approached by a couple parents, they'd be interested, and I think it may be good for the board, too. If we could hear just a review of the Tahoe policy from our food service vendor regarding, like, graduating seniors, if they have, still have money on their books, on their accounts, their lunch accounts, if we just get a review of how that money is handled, how it's refunded and so on.
Do we have other topics to be placed on future meetings? Brett?
I'm not sure if this will fall under the actual board, but we could probably handle it at the policy meeting. This next one might be too short to obviously add it on there, but if I want, I'm wondering if we can review the policy that we have on helping to communicate it out to our students, who's allowed to do it, outside organizations, internal, et cetera, et cetera. Just our communication policy with all of our students.
As far as from the outside coming in?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Brett. Mr. Smith?
Uh, with the same spirit that we've applied, the administrators' compensation plan and the teachers and the staff and custodian and IT, I'd like, um, the board to direct the Finance HR Committee to do a superintendent's compensation review, um, so that we can gather the data from all the area, like-sized districts, bigger districts, um, the various, um, wages, benefits. Uh, I think we go into meetings looking for that information, but it's until actually this board directs the HR and finance directors to do it, um, I don't think they would do it on their own. So, that'd be either a port, they can do it at a, bring it through policy or bring it to the board.
I have one too. And this might fall for our, our committee as well. Um, but how we handle, um, kids being ill at school, um, like what the determination is to send them home, how we handle that, or if there's potentially with the recent, um, I'm going to say outbreak of influenza lately, um, you know, how do we handle that? Is it potential school closures? Because I've seen that happening, um, just how we kind of work with the health department type of things.
Give the threshold numbers and things.
Yeah, because it's been kind of, I think there was probably eighty-some, eighty-four kids out at Washington, you know, so, I'm assuming it might, I, hopefully it won't get any higher, but that's almost half, or they're, the kids gone.
Thank you, County Health. Spring break can't come sooner than after.
Any other items for future board meetings or committee meetings? All right.
Just a question.
Go ahead, Paul.
Did you ask me for a motion to direct the committee? Or, I didn't understand what you said.
No, I, I don't think I would need one.
So, you just want to-
Do I consensus?
Consensus?
I mean, it'd be the consensus to have, if you wanted as an agenda item, just so that Brian Dasher and Cindy Heinz has direction from the board to go and conduct this research. I mean-
Rather than direction.
Obviously, um, uh, being that it's the superintendent information and they're subordinate, I wouldn't expect them to just do it on their own, so.
Okay, I guess I just thought you were, I didn't think you were putting on a map, but you're asked for it, of a motion to put it on your agenda or move it ahead with your committee.
As long as we can just, as a future agenda item. I don't know if we have to take action on it or-
What was in items for future business, so we didn't have that posted for this evening, correct? So, we could, if you'd like, we could add it to HR Finance, we could add it to a different location.
Yeah, we could-
That's all right with everybody, we'll take that too.
We can add it to HR Finance and then the motioning part can come at future meeting.
Okay. Does that work for everybody?
No, you're done.
All right. Thanks for the clarifying question, appreciate that, Paul. We do keep on there for the board, board members to review the running list of items on there, so make sure you click into the spreadsheet. I know we still have a couple, uh, that we've touched on tonight, the Alice training for students. We've talked, uh, Mr. Dasher's still doing some review on, on the maple syrup situation, uh, out in, uh, Maple Grove and within our, our district, if it has any labeling and being produced within our district, are there any liability concerns?
Do we have an idea timeframe as to when we'd have an answer? I know we've talked about that for a couple months.
Yeah, and Brian, I think we were waiting till the next board meeting for the maple syrup, correct? We've got one more step left, and that's with Laura.
Yeah. Is that appropriate?
Everyone all right with that? Then, Brian, if you could come up to the microphone, yeah, we would certainly-
Um, so, we can, we can operate the syrup kind of like, we can treat it like a school garden, like we do with lettuce and stuff like that. We'll be fine. From a nutritional standpoint, we can work it in, we just have to be careful of the amount that we're, um, giving the kids per serving. And then, um, uh, so I, I think going forward, we just need to, um, work with Laura and just make sure, I believe the person that's out there already working has the Safe Serve certification. So, we've got all the certifications in place, um, and so I'm just going to ask that, um, Laura work with them just to overview the process and make sure that it's meeting all of our, um, guidelines for serving and creating food, uh, same way that we would do it with the school gardens. And, um, I think, I think we'll be fine. We would be covered if there were any kind of, um, uh, issues arising out of our negligence, somebody got sick or something, you know, that would be covered under our general liability policy. So, it's just a matter of following up with Laura and, and connecting Laura with, um, with the group out there and just having them kind of review that whole process and just kind of inspection.
Will we sell people, sorry, you're referring to-
No, no, I was, yeah, we're not, we're not selling it. Um, it's, uh, it's being, um, they do a tapping and then, um, uh, they, they actually, uh, serve it as part of the pancake breakfast type thing. And I think at one point is, um, are, are we selling it? I, I keep going back and forth on this one. We're not selling it.
We do not sell our maple syrup, no.
Yeah, we're not selling the maple syrup. So, I was, I was, uh, misinform, or misconstruing that earlier on.
It was I. I thought we, I thought it was announced that it's being sold as maple syrup. We, uh-
Okay.
We sell maple syrup that is from an organization that actually produces their own, and then they put a, a maple wood sticker on it, to do this amount. From our-
Yeah, so we're, we're fine that way. Um, so, yeah, we should be good to go. Uh, we just need to be careful we're not serving too much and we should be fine.
Sugar free.
Right. Kids bones and apples.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian. So, we did list, besides on the spreadsheet, other items, unfinished items for future meetings, some of those we have checked off this evening or have had updates on. We do keep a, um, also the board decision financial impact summary, as there's an attached document on there as well. Our radio schedule is tomorrow morning, Thursday, March 14th, at 8:15 AM with Blue Jay, 7:30 radio station. Dr. Sample and I will be in attendance there. Let's go through the future meetings. Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board Meeting is Thursday, March 14th, at 1:30 PM at Merrill High School. Policy Committee Meeting is Thursday, March 14th, at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom. The School Forest Advisory Meeting is Monday, March 25th, 2019, at 4:00 PM, audit the school forest. The Strategic Planning Committee Meeting will be Wednesday, March 27th, at 5:00 PM in Merrill High School Library. The next Facilities Committee Meeting is Wednesday, April 3rd, at 3:30 PM here in the boardroom, followed directly by the Finance HR Committee Meeting that same day, Wednesday, April 3rd, at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom, followed by a special board meeting that night at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom on April 3rd. On April 8th, at 6:30 PM, which is a Monday night, there will be the Maple Grove Governance Board Meeting located out at Maple Grove. The Head Start Policy Council will meet on Tuesday, April 9th, at 5:30 PM, by River School for Young Learners. The Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee Meeting will be on Wednesday, April 10th, at 4:30 here in the boardroom. And the next regular board meeting of the, of the whole will be Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom as well. Moving on, the contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Part N1, Part NC, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Part NF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories of disciplinary data or specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific person or persons, except where Part NB applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, and 118.125, for the purpose of considering student early college credit and Start Now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records, and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the persons discussed. The purpose of the closed session is for the consideration of and possible action regarding applications for participation in the early college credit and Start College Now programs to review public complaint of an employee and to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including the potential for a closed session or sessions to review the specifics applicable to the affected student or students, if the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such student or students pursuant to Section 19.85, Part N1, Part NF, Wisconsin statute. Any such closed session or session shall be immediately followed by reconvening into open session for further consideration, ultimately act upon the parental requests. Do we have a roll call? Uh, we need the motion first. Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jeremy. Then could we have a roll call on that motion, please, Jeremy?
Do we have all three? Is there anyone? Yeah, is it an aye? Is it aye? Yeah, okay. Mike Dashoff?
Aye.
Pop Rose?
Aye.
Jeremy Ratliff?
Aye.
Johnny Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Getting that habit any of this yet.